Good evening and welcome to the township of Woolwich Committee of the Whole Meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We welcome everyone here today and all of those watching on YouTube. I will now do a roll call of council. I councillor Kado and present in chairing the meeting Mayor Shance.
Present.
Councillor Bryant.
Present.
Councillor Grant.
Present.
Councillor Schwint.
Present.
And councillor Burgess sends his regrets. So we need a public resolution to reconvene an open session. A mover for councillor Grant seconded by councillor Bryant, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. I want to begin by acknowledging the land on which we live has been here since time immemorial and that indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I think that Chinautin also called the Anawarant, the Anishnabe and the Hudasshoni people. Who have lived here and cared for this land and who continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna and the land that sustains us. Do any council members have any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none. There are no items to come forward from closed section, from closed session. Uh, there are no public meetings. We do have um. Couple of presentations today. So this evening we will begin with a presentation by Ryan and Sal of the Township of Woolwich. Two S L G B T Q plus ad hoc working group who are presenting uh their, the group's final report. If you wanted just.
Yep, I'll hit that perfect. I have to say uh. I feel like a YouTuber. I've never. At fifty years old, I get to finally be on YouTube. Anyway, my. Um, my name's Ryan Hume. I'm a fifteen year resident of Elmira. And uh. I'm up here with Sal, who is maybe fifteen years old. Seventeen, I knew you were older than fifteen. But we're gonna do a little presentation. You'll have to forgive us. We haven't rehearsed too many times. This might be the first one. So uh be patient with us, but we did want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. And also special thanks to Nathan and Kea and Jeff. Who guided us through this process. They were very friendly. And they usually had snacks at the meeting, which are always appreciated. Um. I think uh. We didn't want to come up here and just read the report. We know you're capable of that. Uh, we wanted to design the report in a way that we felt it could be usable. We talked a little bit at the beginning about our philosophy and our approach. Um, but ultimately there were very actionable items attached to it. And um, you know, shout out to to Jeff Smith for making it so readable and so accessible. Um. You you will note that some members of the committee are not here. Uh, and that was one of the things that I think is important to recognize because not everyone on the committee feels comfortable. Um, having their names attached to it or being on YouTube or being made public. And I think that's um. Speaks to what we're trying to accomplish. And I say we because I think. You know, as a community member, I recognize you are in positions of leadership, but I also want to recognize that people in the community have to contribute as well. Um, and with that, I think I'm gonna let Sal step in here for a second. And they wanted to speak a little bit about the opportunity that this has afforded them.
Hey, um. I'm not very good at conveying my thoughts, so I apologize. Um. So yeah, going off of that, um. As I'm, I'm seventeen, right? I haven't graduated high school yet. Um. I'm just one kid in a high school um. Who happens to identify as gender fluid, meaning my pronouns change sometimes and I don't always. Identify with she her pronouns. I go by they them pronouns or she they or even he they sometimes and um. Well, not everyone's very accepting of that. Um, and so this was a great. I was really appreciative of this opportunity because it gave me a chance to. Have my voice heard uh figuratively and literally. Um. Cause as uh someone in like. When you're in school and you're a student, you don't, you hear about making changes in the world. But um, you never really know how or what to do, even if people say like start new community. It's like, how do I do that? What am I supposed to do? I don't even know where to begin with these problems. Um, so this working group, um, when they were like. Or was reached out to um my school's GSA. It um allowed just some of us students to um have our voices heard and um. Be able to somewhat communicate like the problem and like. How it can like start moving forward in creating a better community.
So. Think so. Um. I would say for me, and I'll just, I I don't have a ton of thoughts more to add, but. I'm, I'm very aware of the privilege of my own identity and the spaces that I navigate. For me, this is a. A conversation about creating safe spaces and inclusive spaces. So where in this community do I feel safe and included? I can tell you anywhere. It's easy for me to navigate this space, all the spaces. I also recognize that if I was a woman who was wearing a Muslim woman who was wearing a hijab and shopping downtown. Would I feel the same if I was a Sikh man and I was wearing a turban and getting gas at the gas station? Would I feel the same? If I was a gay man and I wanted to play on a hockey team in the community, would I feel the same? Would I have the same? Level of safety? Would I feel just as included as I do with the identity that I bring? So I think it's, it was important for us uh as a group because we, as our, as our conversations. Um, as our meetings grew and our time together grew. Um, we did, we did talk obviously most extensively about two S L G B T Q I A plus. Community and what we can do for them. And I think we laid out a pretty good framework for steps that can be taken. Beating with the stickers and the and possible bench and other things that we can make actionable. But we also wanted to emphasize the importance of inclusive spaces for everybody and thinking about everybody. Uh, and I know that sounds like a pie in the sky kind of statement when you say things about everyone. I think if you can, um, you know, we're talking about code based identities, people who. Whoever they are, however they identify, they should be able to navigate each and all of the spaces that we share with each other in this town. Um, and so. We, that's why we put forward that um. The coalition of inclusive municipalities that UNESCO put together and we're hoping that can provide a framework. Because it's, I can imagine it's not easy, you know, being the councillor in a small town. What is, what does that look like? What does building inclusive spaces look like? So accessing some of those resources that already exist. You know, we're, we're, we're very excited to see some of that play out. Uh, and we were also excited to see that as part of your strategic plan. And part of and and your commitment to the pride work that's already happened and your commitment to the multicultural work that's already happened. And so the work is happening and we commend you for that. And we're just excited to see where next steps take us. So thanks for your time today. Um, and happy to answer any questions if that's how this process works.
Thank you very much, Ryan, and thank you very much, Sal. Um, I I will say before I open it up to council questions. Um, on behalf of myself and councillor Grant, it was our pleasure to work with the working group. It truly was and uh Sal. Um, you know, it takes a lot of courage for you to stand up and and say what you had said. So I just want to thank you for really bringing that voice forward. And representing, you know, more than just yourself. It takes a lot of courage. So thank you for doing that. Um, so with that being said, I know that there is a resolution uh for council to vote on, but before we do that. Are there any questions for the delegation? Mayor Shance.
Not a delegation, not, not a delegation, not a delegation. Really, but I I wanted to also say thank you and to Sal, I wanted to say um. You started off by apologizing and I do that a lot too and. Don't ever, you don't need, I I do it too. So here I am almost apologetic. Um, but you never need to apologize for who you are and you did great. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. And yes, it was a presentation, not necessarily a delegation. Thanks for that. Uh councillor Schwint.
So yeah, like echo the comments, um, I'm hoping Sal, you come and speak for council again in the future, but lots of different issues. This is just the first time. We all have our first time speaking for council and we all didn't like it. It gets better, it gets easier, Ryan. I know you're gonna talk for council whenever you want, so I want to offer you that same. Um, but question I do have though is looking at recommendations number four, there's five of them there and some of them are. Quite easy stickers. Others are, I guess, bigger in terms of capital investment and thought process. Can you prioritize crosswalks versus sidewalks versus mules, just so I engage it better in my head?
We did, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think in the other report we provided, there were costs attached. Oh, in terms of importance.
Importance, yep. And what you'd see the most value in and have the most impact on the community.
I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody. Um. Uh, yeah. Oh, re-bring something up, Jeff?
Uh, sure, I'm, I'm happy to jump in through you, Mr. Chair. Um, just if if council turns their attention to uh the chart on page nine of your report. Um, the committee did, sorry, the working group did speak about uh the timing. And in that they sort of did prioritize uh some of those action items. So they almost laid out a five-year plan uh that they thought council could achieve. Uh, over, uh, you know, a few years. Um, and the things that were sort of uh in in year one or year two were the earlier ones and then the the lower priorities were the ones that you see in year three and five. Yeah. I put my hand up, but I I realized that I'm chairing the meeting and they don't necessarily need to do that. I think that the other thing that I wanted to draw council's attention to is right under that chart. Um, uh, there is a statement that says that the working group really does recognize the financial pressures that the township is under. So I wanted to. Acknowledge that. And so when you see the language in the recommendation. Um, it was deliberate in consider installing some of these things. And although it is very much the recommendation of this working group that the township actioned some of those items, there is a recognition that. If we were to move forward with everything on this list in the immediate term, it could be, you know, economically unfeasible. So by laying out a bit of a strategy, uh, you know, what five years would look like, it gives us the opportunity to have those discussions on a regular basis. And continue to scale up or scale down depending on how much funding makes itself available. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions? So there is a recommendation. Um. Maybe I'll ask, uh, Ryan, do you want to take a seat now? I feel bad making you stand up so long. Um, would there be any other further discussion or questions for staff before we move on? There is a recommendation then um for this resolution. Do we have a mover? Uh, councillor Grant seconded. Mayor Sean, sell those in favor. Further discussion?
Sorry, I think this is an important one to discuss a little bit because I look at the recommendation and it's saying. Take the following actions. And are we binding ourselves to the timeline? And I'm okay if we are. Or can we say, hey, we want to get something done ASAP? And I'm probably more on that page as I'd like to see us. Get something done. We've been in office now for a year. This became an issue a year and a half ago. I'm kind of tired of talking, more interested in. Let's do a crosswalk or a sidewalk or professional mural and show we're serious. So that's what I'd like to see us consider.
No, and I appreciate that. And I think that. The conception behind this for the working group wasn't necessarily that we wanted to go and do a one and done type deal. We really want to make this something that is engaging with the community, something that we revisit on a continual basis. And I think. It, we are moving on this relatively quickly in doing things like joining UNESCO. I think that that sets us up for success, not just on this file. But EDIB more generally. And I think that that would have been one of my um questions had I been. Um, you know, where you're sitting right now is how can we ensure that we can build on the success that this working group has presented us with? With some of those other uh demographics within our community, you know? Um, because I think that there is a lot of important work that we should be looking into. And I think that this gives us an avenue whereby we can complete some of that work. Today, tomorrow, in the short term, not really waiting five years down the road. Mayor Sean.
Thank you. I would say if you go back to the, the chart there, there is a number of items that are listed as year one. So I would say that should be. Uh, if if we're approving this, that that those should be uh considered in year one and a number that are ongoing, which are also. Sort of current. And if you want something that's really tangible, um benches is in year one. So I would say that's a very tangible item.
I would also add that the working group was really cognizant of the fact that maybe not everybody in the community fully bought in um to this. Uh, when we had previous discussions. So it gives us an opportunity to, you know, socialize some of these ideas as well, um, which may not be a bad thing.
Yep, seeing the benches in the year ones, a start, which is good. I'm gonna have to admit, I'm not sold on all the recommendations though. Um, especially when we look at considering a third staff role. To me, that's needs to be fleshed out a whole lot further to understand what that means. We've had this conversation for six months now, but uh. Help me please. With a green person. Um, do we have that as staff roles? And I put these very similar issues. How do we incorporate them? Sort of pull that in this recommendation scares me a little bit, I'll admit.
And to that point that I, I think that it's important that we do consider roles like that, even if we as a council decide that it's not something that we want to move forward with. I think that this working group has suggested that this is something that we should consider, whether or not we move forward with it is why it's written as consider, I I would suggest. I wonder if I could help with that one, um, because some of the discussions that we had at the working group level. Um, was a recognition that there is no one person who's doing EDIB work at the township. It is spread across. Um, you know, all the different departments and and the senior management team, really. Um, I think the working group struggled with if, if everyone's doing it, is anyone really responsible for it? But at the same time, recognized um the conversations that council has had around hiring specific positions. And it's not always something that council wants to look at. So uh, the working group, I know worded the uh recommendation specifically to say consider. So it's something for council to, to continue to look at in the future. It's not, you approve the recommendation in front of you and all of a sudden a new person walks into the township tomorrow. Um, and then the other piece was that uh it potentially it's a shared resource. So at some point in the future, if if council does look, look at this, um, you know, sharing resources allows the township to learn from other municipalities. But also to share that cost burden as well. And one other thing that just um triggered in my mind as well is we had discussions around how we can better utilize some of the regional resources. Um, so that would kind of feed into that discussion as well. A lukewarm?
I'm just, we're heading into budget and I'm just. People are struggling with us increasing taxes to the eight point five percent, I believe, that was asked for by staff. And I think this is something that needs to come forward to the budget. As we're talking about adding additional potentially staff people or. The various resources, where do we get the funding? And I think that's going to become a big question. So I would like to see some of this carried forward to the budget process versus us trying to figure it out tonight.
I think the intent that this will come forward to the budget. I think that we are considering a lot of these expenditures and we would need. That approval during those budget deliberations, if I'm not mistaken.
So if again, that's where I guess I'm starting with the report in that. What are we considering? What are we approving in principle? And what's actually gonna happen? I would like to see us commit to one action tonight. The benches, murals, that's why I asked the question about what's a priority. So I would like to see us commit to doing something. The same time I'm with councillor Bryant and that. Some of these are bigger, longer term questions. We have to figure out how they fit in the overall. Strategic plan of the township.
Could I suggest, um, so a number of these, there's no, no dollars associated with it. If, if there's a particular um. Project, if so, again, I'll go tier one is is benches. Uh. We can direct staff uh to include that in the budget process and then we'll look at it in the budget process.
I'd rather commit to it tonight for this year. Okay, to me, it's not a big dollar value, but it's making a statement. We have delayed this one longer than I was comfortable with.
Okay.
I think we've got a thousand, we've got two thousand dollars that we can find somehow to get that underway in two thousand and twenty-three. To send a message that we're in support.
Uh, yeah, I have no problem doing that. I think that's. There is also a need to recognize some of the other suggestions that the working group has made and whether or not this council agrees with them in theory, I think, is worth exploring. Uh, because it provides that direction to staff, whether or not they should continue to engage with some of these ideas. So um. I am looking for direction from council uh with respect to maybe some of the broader recommendations, knowing that it is consideration. Um, for many of these things, I think that it is within the purview of staff to really deliberate and come back to council with a bit of a strategic plan on how to implement this. If it is the will of council to accept this report and buy into the recommendations. That's a great.
Thank you through you um to the rest of council. I, when I look at this and when um councillor Schwint's talking about kind of priorities. I I kind of separate out the consider a shared position as separate from the very like pointed. Benches, murals, uh crosswalk, um, as like a, a five-year plan. Um, instead I look at it kind of in that concept of considering this role as a larger diversity. Whether it's joining the uh coalition of inclusive municipalities and that's something that maybe is a five down the road quite far. Um, so as it stands, I'd be more than happy to support a a bench installation this year. Um, I think we'd probably want to talk to Mr. Patrick. Our, our holder of the, the purse, uh, on whether or not that's something possible. But I would point out too that we've also done the pride stickers this year as well, that that is part of that process as well.
So I suppose if I'm to revisit the uh, the recommendation, not the recommendation necessarily, sorry. Let's say flip through these. It is a recommendation. Is there any one of these that you would like to word Smith in order to make you feel more comfortable with how it is written? I'm sorry, it doesn't have to be just that you.
Well, it's, it's not me. I've got an opinion. I always have an opinion.
Well, that's.
So I, do I endorse the report in principle for sure? Some of those things I think we need to discuss further. Um, but I would like to endorse them in principle and go ahead with the benches in two thousand and twenty-three. I think staff can find a way, even if it's out of the clerk's discretionary grants. I love spending that budget. I think there's room there somewhere that we can go ahead and make that decision tonight.
Mayor Shance.
I, I don't have a problem with that in principle. I guess I would ask um staff. Um, either David or Richard or uh. Mr. Patrick or Ms. McArthur, if um both of those are possible from a financial and from a staff time point of view.
You want me to go first, Dan? All right, uh, dear Mr. Chairman, I would say that, you know, I think the, the report identifies from benches between a thousand and two thousand dollars. I think councillor Swint is correct. We can probably find that somewhere within our budget to be able to do that this year. I think. My other concern would be probably more along the lines of is there capacity to get it done in the month? Then a bit that we actually have left before the end of the year. That would probably be more so rather than a financial side.
I think I'll just add um further to that comment that um financially, I think, yes, we can accommodate that. Um, insulation, a purchase, so we'd have to get a design and get a purchase. That may be an issue and installation of a concrete base uh may be prohibitive. Um, at this time of year and look to spring, but I think we could look at a design and getting a purchase, but maybe not install in actual spring, if that's fair.
Not to speak for uh councillor Swint, but I think his intention was that to get the ball rolling and maybe this uh fiscal year being the, the place that we're pulling from for the cost of the benches. But I imagine that spring would be a more uh reasonable timeline to get them installed.
All satisfied with that then? Um. Councillor Bryant.
Um, I'm just looking at number four and I'm looking at C, D and E. They're the high ticket items. Is there any way we can word that differently so that we? Put those into a budget process because they're not a thousand dollar items. They could be ten, twenty thousand and I don't. I just, the wording doesn't sit well with me for some reason.
Yeah, I did, I just want to jump in because it was at the senior management team that I suggested to. Jeff, that something go into the report from a timing perspective. So obviously your, the council's still struggling with that. But the idea was that you're not, you're not approving. Any financial expenditure this evening other than what you've just done there. You're saying in principle, you think these things should be considered in the fullness of time. They will need to come before you as council as part of the budget process. That's where you have to vote on them. All you're saying right now is in the fullness of time. You know, and and you know what? At the end of the day, we had put in there suggested timing, uh, you know, or Jeff and the team did. Um, that may or may not shift as we always know, depending on what the priorities are that that come up. But as much as possible, we wanted to put something forward that showed, hey, this would be a phased staged implementation plan. Because um while benches um aren't very expensive, you know, one of the things I know when we investigated. Um, either a crosswalk or a mural. Those can get expensive if we're going to do them right. And if we're going to protect them. Make sure they're done in appropriate paint and and protective sealant or whatever is done so that. God forbid, but if there's graffiti and things like that, you can clean them up very quickly. So. Some of the larger ticker right, ticket items, you definitely will want to consider how they fit into the overall budget. But I I really want to assure council that um. Even when we vetted this at senior management, um, we asked Jeff to put the timeframes on so that you understood clearly. This is how we would suggest you look at things in a phased staged way. And then you're voting on things as part of the budget process and you're, you're still, it's, it's always, as I'm always saying. It's always ultimately council's decision in the end when they actually happen.
And I will add, I think that there was a recognition from the working group uh about some of the financial constraints. Um, and I appreciate that recognition um from the members of that working group as we kind of navigated some of these challenges. Any further discussion? So we did have a mover. Uh, we've slightly adjusted that though with uh the direction to move forward with the benches. Um, are you still comfortable with moving that? And are you still comfortable seconding that? So we will call a vote then. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much. All right, so next we have Colleen Willard Hope, the co-chair of Woolwich Township Heritage Committee to present the committee's two thousand and twenty-four work plan and budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. I am um pleased tonight to represent the heritage committee of the township or um. And to present our work plan for two thousand and twenty-four. And um, I'm hoping that Tanya can run the PowerPoint for me. It's very short. And, um, I'm hoping that Tanya can run the PowerPoint for me. It's very short.
Just coming up now.
Thank you. Next slide, please. This is a work in progress. We've had a lot of discussion, but we haven't put the fine details in yet. So I wanted to let you know that we are working on a modified Gantt chart with the, the budget and the items, followed by the resources, who is going to take the lead and, uh, so forth, as you can see on the, the, um, top of the chart that I've provided for you here. Next slide, please. One of the things that we're very interested in is, um, making sure that, uh, everyone in the township is aware that, um, Woolwich does take pride in its heritage and wants to continue to protect, um, buildings and other structures and landscapes that are important to our cultural heritage. So two of the items that we want to do, and they, they kind of go together, um, is to increase community awareness through a number of different activities that are coming up on the next slide. Um, and those to, in order to do those, we will need to incorporate some digital media. Next slide, please. We have, um, done quite a bit of research and we have some, um, items that we think would be appropriate to have photographs and, um, some write-ups in a brochure that will be available in hard copy. Um, and we'll continue to use those same, um, images uh, into videos and slideshows and, um, a heritage display for the memorial center. So we will, we will be reusing some of those same materials over again, so that we can make sure that, um, we're being efficient with what, with the resources, but also, um, spreading the information and the word around the township as, as we can. We plan to provide these, uh, these resources at libraries and, uh, retirement homes and schools. And, uh, basically wherever we are welcome to do that. Next slide, please. In conjunction with the Architectural Conservatory of Ontario, we hope to continue to, um, make heritage designations for structures within our township that, um, have cultural relevance and have been, been around for a good while, that are important for people to remember where we came from and to, uh, have, take value in, in what our forefathers and foremothers have, uh, provided for us. So as we go forward, we'd like to continue to designate various, um, structures for heritage, um, recognition. Next slide, please. So in summary, uh, we have education and digital media kind of going together to incorp-, uh, to increase community awareness and heritage designations in cooperation with the Architectural Conservatory of Ontario. None of the members of the committee is a, is a historical architect. So we need some, um, help with that as we go forward. And that's the end of my presentation. In case anyone has any questions, I'll stay visible on your screens.
Thank you very much, Ms. Willard Holt. Um, does council have any questions? Counsel Bryant.
Thank you. Just a comment. I want to thank Colleen for making the presentation as I sit on the heritage committee with her. So, um, we're hoping that council will support this so we can move forward and get our designations done and start getting some information out for the public. And increase the awareness in Woolwich Township for what the committee would like to see happen.
There is a resolution. Figuring you might want to move that one. And do we have a secondary counselor grant, uh, for their discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried. All right. So now we have a delegation. I got that one right. I hope, uh, we have one delegation this evening. But before we get started with that, I would like to remind everyone of the guidelines for participating on this section of the agenda. Delegations have seven minutes unless council or the clerk has set a different amount of time. After you speak, please wait for questions from council. Once there are no further questions, you may return to your seat. You can leave anytime if you wish, or you're more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. So we welcome Philip Bertrand of the First Omira Scouts Group. Please begin when you're ready.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, uh, Mayor, Council and Staffs for, uh, here in me talk. Uh, no, it doesn't get a, a easier when you do it. Uh, this is the third or fourth time. Um, but it's every four years, so I completely forget the feeling. Um, and now we're live. It's, it's a new thing. Uh, the First Omira Scout Group would like to seek a reduced rate for our use of Gore Park for our annual Christmas tree stand. For decades, Gore Park has been home to the annual event ushering in the Christmas season. First through the J C's, then J C's with scouting support and now runs solely by the First Omira Scout Group. The current policy for community groups only gives a discount rate for the first year, which we used last year. Reduced discount for a second year and no discount for subsequent years. Uh, every councils, we have requested an exception from the policy and prior to the policy being in place, we asked for, uh, uh, the council to donate, uh, the rental of Gore Park. And, and this is for the, um, reduced rental rate for the duration of the council's term. Uh, quality Christmas trees have been in high demand, particularly after COVID. With reduced plantings 15 years ago, supplies have been, uh, squeezed and prices have continuously climbed. Without the discount, we will be forced to move from the downtown area due to financial impact. With record participant numbers, we have not seen in the last 20 years, I'm happy to say. Uh, the First Omira Scout Group, uh, was founded in, uh, 1912, continued as a tradition of youth leadership, outdoor adventure and community services. We are involved locally through the food drive, remembrance parade, Omira maple syrup festival, township cleanup and have participated in a past events such as tree plantings throughout Woolwich Township, cleanups of various GRCA properties. Our success comes from the dedication of our volunteers and our frequent outdoor adventures and camps. And of course, uh, with almost our sections camping monthly, it takes a toll on everything we own. Uh, so we appreciate the community purchasing their Christmas trees from us and supporting our wild adventures. Um, I've brought a, a small number of copies with some pictures for, uh, afterwards that you can see some of our crazy adventures, including we discovered this summer that canoes could be submarines. Uh, so with that, uh, we ask council to grant us the, uh, maximum reduced rate at Gore Park for the duration of your term. Again, thank you, uh, for your support and consideration of this matter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bertrand. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. Is there any further discussion on this? Mayor Shells.
I, I would move the recommendation that, uh, we provide you with the max, maximum reduced rate. Is that, is that the wording that you had there? Uh, for the duration of this term of council and, and thank you for, uh, for leading the scouts and, uh, training a whole new generation of leaders. So thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Yeah, I would second as well as a former scout of Mary Hope first. Um, I also have learned that some, uh, that canoes can be submarines as well, as can kayaks, so.
Any further discussion on that one? Um, I'll call a, a vote then. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much, uh, for your delegation. Sorry.
You will notice that this time I didn't bring a room full of cubs.
I did notice that. It's very quiet.
Again, we thank you for your engagement in the community and we thank you for coming and delegating to us tonight. All right. So moving forward, there's no unfinished business tonight. Uh, we do have one item for information. Does anyone on council wish to discuss the consent item? Um, or does someone like to move a motion to receive it? Yeah. Uh, moved by Counselor Schwint. Second by Counselor Grant. Any? All those in favor? And that is carried. There are no items pulled from the information package. We have one, two staff reports, uh, the first uh, being 12.1, A11, 2023 by law to establish, maintain and regulate the fire department for the township of Woolwich. So tonight we have Fire Chief, uh, Aldis and Deputy Fire Chief Easton here to present the report.
We'll just hand it over to Deputy Easton. He put a lot of effort into this, um, bylaw, so I'll pass it off to him. Uh, thank you, Chief Aldis. Uh, good evening, Mayor Council. Um, so the, as I read the report on, uh, establishing and regulating bylaw for, uh, the fire department of, of Watch. Did you ever have a chance to read it? All right. So, uh, basically it is council's permission for us to operate as a fire department and it sets out, uh, what services we can and will provide to the residents and visitors of Woolwich Township. Um, there's a couple of changes that were made as a result of, uh, recent uh, legislation that was introduced by the province, which is the, uh, mandatory certification. As well as, uh, it hadn't been, uh, revised since, I believe, 2016. Uh, so it was updated to include, uh, different wording and, um, just, uh, to include, uh, you know, kind of uh, fill in some gaps that were otherwise identified, uh, from the previous version. I did, would you like me to go over the, the report line by line or is it, uh? I'm, I'm not sure how to proceed. To be honest, I don't know the proceedings about this, so.
I, I don't think that we need a line by line analysis. Um. Uh, I, uh, council did have an opportunity to read it. Maybe we start, um, with the resolution in front of council. Um. Do we have a mover on the resolution? Counselor Brian, a second by Counselor Grant. Do we have further discussion? Counselor Schwint, sorry.
Couple of questions. Number 24 talks about, yes, I know we only operate within Woolwich. But when there's a problem, I think the chief has to have the right to go help get to share out, for example, even if we don't have a joint service agreement. When there's an issue, I think whole purpose of having a fire department or police department or ambulance is we go help. I'm wondering why we include thou shalt not go help in a bylaw like this. Um, there's one question, number. I guess that was my big one. I was also concerned with the schedules, how prescribed the schedules are and does that mean it has to come back for council for changes to those schedules? Or is that something that the chief or the C A L can do unilaterally?
Um, through, um, Chair Kado to Counselor Schwint, um, for the, the schedules in the back, they're outside of the bylaw. So it's something that we can just bring back as an information as we go to move forward into upgrading any of the skills in which we have. Currently they represent exactly what we're doing at the present time and have done in the previous years. So nothing has changed in there. We do go in and help other fire departments because we have a mutual aid agreement within the, the region of Waterloo. So we do do that and we do have agreements in place for Centre Wellington, Mapleton. So we can be called in to go at any of those and we are currently working on some agreements with Guelph, Ramaasa for mutual aid and the city of Guelph, because they're our closest neighbors, so.
Are there any questions?
Sorry, Counselor Schwint, um, through, uh, Chair Kado to yourself. Uh, just if you read further down on that, uh, point 24, it does clarify the chief's power to, um, sorry, I'm just trying to, I'm working from a single screen here, so I'm just trying, trying to navigate all of it all at once here. Uh, it, at the discretion of the fire chief, it doesn't, it's a ministry authorized to designate in any county. Uh, it basically spells out, at the chief's discretion, we will, uh, exceed our boundaries and, uh, assist other fire departments. Uh, it's just the, the immediate wording is that we shall not, just because we don't want, uh, I guess people being cavalier, just kind of traveling all over the place.
No further questions or comments. I'll call a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. All right, next 12.2, uh, C 28 to 2023 draft 2024 council meeting schedule. We have Deputy Clerk Smith to present her report.
Thank you, Chair Kado, and good evening to you, uh, the mayor and the rest of council. Before you this evening is your draft 2024 council meeting schedule. As council directed staff at the October 17th council meeting, staff have drafted a schedule to include one rotation per month with a break week in between meeting weeks. I would like to note that two rotations, one in February and one in May, do not follow this pattern as the council meeting would have fallen after a long weekend. Previous direction to staff from council was to avoid scheduling meetings after long weekends. And the strategy used, staff used in February and May is to remove the break week in between meetings. Furthermore, I think it is important to highlight for council that this type of schedule, sorry, that with this type of schedule, unexpected and urgent items may need to go directly to a council meeting rather than a committee of the whole meeting. Uh, staff have less control planning certain items with this pattern of scheduling, which may not always allow council to have a sober second thought. Through this report before you tonight, staff are seeking approval of the draft 2024 council meeting schedule as well as direction on using the same pattern for scheduling meetings for the rest of the term of council. And with that, if council has any questions about the report, I would be happy to answer them.
I should stop doing that. I keep whacking and making sounds. Sorry. Uh, thank you, Deputy Clerk Smith. Um, Counselor, any questions? Mayor Shells.
Thank you. Um, the orange ones are, are special council meetings in case we need a planning session. The two purple ones, I'm assuming is just because we're, uh, doing budgets all of January and may need some other business, or is that a definite special council meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Shells. Uh, through you, Chair, to Mayor Shells. Um, so we have utilized, uh, the, it is a, a straight up special council meeting, if you will. Um, it acts exactly as a council meeting. Um, but we call it special because it doesn't have a committee of the whole before it. Um, we've utilized that twice in this schedule where there has been a large break where council has not met, um, to ensure business continuity and, um, that we can effectively, uh, carry out the business of the township.
Thank you.
So there's one.
So I'm not being, I would guess I was surprised about the need for the special council meeting in July. Has there been council meetings in July in the past or? I guess why are we different this year?
Thank you, Counselor Schwint. Through, uh, the chair to you. Um, so yes, there have in the past been times where that last week in July, there has been a meeting. Um, for this schedule, uh, if we had not used, uh, that, had not scheduled the meeting in July, there would have been seven weeks without a scheduled council meeting. Um, and again, the same thing as before, this is to ensure business continuity and that we can, um, efficiently and effectively, uh, conduct the business of the township.
Any further discussion on that? There is a, a two-part recommendation for this resolution, um. Did we get a mover on this already? No. Can I have a mover on this? Counselor Brian, Counselor Grant? Further discussion? Call a vote. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. That brings us to our final staff report, 12.3 IS 21-2023 Township Historic Bridges Update. We have Director of Infrastructure Services Jared Poupay and Engineering Project Supervisor, Fri- Supervisor Ryan Tucker, uh, to present their report and hopefully they can speak a little bit better than I have been tonight.
Uh, good evening, uh, Chair Kado, uh, Counselor, uh, Mayor Shells and, uh, the rest of Woolwich Council. Um, here to present, uh, staff report IS 21, 2023 to provide council with, uh, the requested update on the township's current major steel truss bridge inventory. Uh, there are currently three steel truss bridges located within the Woolwich that have been in place for almost a century or more. Uh, environmental assessments were carried out for all three. Uh, environmental assessments were carried out for all three structures, which began in twenty seventeen in an effort to determine the short term and the long term strategy for each structure. The Glasgow Street South Bridge located in Conestoga, uh, was rehabilitated with the aid of an upper government grant and reopened in twenty twenty-two. The real bill, that rehabilitation altered the traffic flow across the bridge to one way only in an effort to reduce overloading and extend the useful life of the bridge. Uh, once an engineer deems the bridge unsafe for use, uh, which would typically occur during the biannual inspections, uh, the ultimate plan is to close this bridge. Uh, the second of the bridges is the Middlebrook Steel Trust Bridge, also known as the Chambers Bridge, um, which is located on a boundary road with the township of Center Wellington. Uh, the bridge is currently closed and barricaded, um, although both municipalities originally directed staff to remove the structure. Recently, community groups have brought forward alternate plans and potential funding in an attempt to maintain the river crossing at the current location for active transportation use. Uh, on October thirtieth, Center Wellington Council did direct their staff to reconnect with the, uh, group that is currently trying to, um, uh, save the, the, the river crossing, the save the Middlebrook Bridge group, um, to discuss potential funding or fundraising for the structure as well as to coordinate, uh, with Woolwich as, uh, on the structure. Uh, Center Wellington staff will report back to their council, um, if anything is warranted or if there's any material that comes from those conversations. Uh, the last bridge, uh, the Peel Street Bridge located in Winterburn is a two-span structure that crosses the Grand River. The bridge is currently barricaded to stop unauthorized access to the structure, although staff must frequently visit the structure as the barricades have, are being damaged to, uh, allow people access to the bridge, unfortunately. Future plans are to convert the bridge into a pedestrian use structure. Uh, staff are prepared to move forward with the conversion of the structure in twenty-four, uh, pending budget approval. And with that, I will take any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much, Ryan, and thank you for that detailed report. Um, I read it a couple of times and I'm sure I'll be reading it again, um, before our budget deliberations. Uh, are there any questions from council for either Jared or Ryan? Councillor Brian?
Thank you. Through you to either one of them. Have we considered closing the Conestoga Bridge, uh, and using it strictly as pedestrian? Because I know there's been issues in the past with people hitting the abutments and overloading and a bunch of other things.
Through you, Chair Kado, to councillor Brian. Um, at this point, um, it is open for vehicular traffic. Uh, we do have direction, once it is deemed to be unsafe, to close it. Um, I guess if council was interested in converting it to a pedestrian structure like Peel, um, it could be potentially done um, at, when we do close it, um, or if council is interested to direct us to undertake another environmental assessment for that structure. Um, but we'd have to undertake that, uh, process to, to convert it.
Seeing no further discussion at this point, the resolution on this report is to accept this report for information purposes. Moved by councillor Bryant, seconded by councillor Grant. Further discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And that brings us to other business. Um, so there is a resolution from the Woolwich Environmental Advisory Committee. Um, is anybody speaking to this or am I just gonna?
Uh, sorry, uh, Chair Kado, I can, uh, speak to it. So the, uh, environmentally, sorry, the Woolwich Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, made a request for staff and that triggers, uh, typically a memo for myself, uh, that goes on the council agenda just to, uh, see council's direction. Uh, if you do want to, uh, spend staff's time on, uh, on projects that are, uh, that are, uh, sorry, that committees are, are looking at. So, uh, the, the resolution's there and I, I think Ms. Freeze, uh, could speak more towards the discussion or, or sorry, maybe Ms. MacArthur could speak towards the discussion if you want, but uh, this is how that came on your agenda and, uh, it's for council, uh, to decide if they want to direct staff.
Councillor Brian.
Um, just a question. What are they looking to do by protecting the tree canopy? Are they to looking to stop people from cutting trees down on their own property or strictly township land, or what are they exactly looking for here? It's kind of vague.
Uh, sorry, Ms. Freeze, I see you put your hand up, please.
It's my understanding that this would be a tree cutting bylaw for privately owned land.
Councillor Brian?
I foresee this being very problematic when you get into the farms and like, I don't want somebody telling me I can't cut a tree down in my own backyard because it's dying. I mean, that's, I think you're touching on a very sore subject for a lot of private landowners. That's just my personal opinion.
Councillor Schwint.
I thought the region had a tree cutting bylaws. Is that the case or is it um, more of a more general large forest type bylaw they protect?
Ms. Freeze.
Uh, through the chair to, uh, councillor Schwint. So the region does have a tree cutting bylaw, but only within, uh, regional woodlots.
Councillor Grant?
Thank you through you to the rest of council. I think, uh, maybe the, the thrust of this recommendation is to, for staff to go and develop some sort of tree cutting bylaw or to make a recommendation, whether or not that's something we proceed with at a council level is something that could come back for discussion. Um, I think the goal here is to protect the protection of the tree canopy, but another aspect of that could be mandating whether or not, um, when we're we're approving buildings, um, is there any sort of shade protection, uh, anything like that that's also being taken into account? Those could all be part of a larger staff report that may come back and it's something that we can have a further discussion on.
I recall some of our discussions around, um, the Ballunder Park issue and some of the trees that we were losing there and some of the comments that we got from residents about, you know, the one-to-one tree replacement that we have in the township and how replacing, you know, a great big mature tree with a little sapling may be a little disingenuous. Um, so maybe having a policy that looks more at the canopy, um, can alleviate some of the concerns that residents were expressing, uh, with that policy. Director Freeze.
Uh, thank you. So staff did get a chance to look at the implications if there was a direction from, uh, council for us to look at a tree cutting bylaw. Um, as you know, we are already, um, pretty tightly resourced and we have a very, uh, full work plan for the next few years. Uh, if council would like us to take a look at a tree cutting bylaw, um, our first suggestion would be that we'd look at it not in twenty twenty-four, but rather, uh, look at adding it to the work plan in twenty twenty-five and twenty or twenty twenty-six. Um, if, yeah, council desires to look at it sooner, I think that we've got some options. We could, um, look at a consultant to do the work for us and add it to the budget. Um, we can figure out what we would expect that would be, but I would imagine around seventy-five thousand or so to get a consultant to do the bylaw for us. Um, alternatively, if we want to do it in twenty twenty-four, we did look at some options of other projects that could be bumped. Um, but we don't have a, a lot that can be bumped because of, uh, legislative timelines for our, our zoning bylaw and official plan. That leaves the only one would be the Bresla Secondary Plan or any work in the Elmira Core. And then I would also point out to council that we should look at, um, through budget for, um, the impact on enforcement as well. Um, because we don't have any expertise on staff, like no arborist or something to assess the requirements in the, in the, uh, tree cutting bylaw as well as to go out there when there are enforcement complaints. So uh, few implications that council should consider before the direction to staff. Thanks.
Councillor Schwint.
I'm listening to what director Freeze said, so that resonating with me. And I guess I'm also thinking my child was in community. I'm seeing a push for more trees that are being planted. Right now, I'm not seeing a net loss of trees in the township. So I don't think we're addressing a problem that we're seeing today. If that changes, then I would change my mind. Maybe it is worth staff time to come back with something, but when we've got a community already embracing more trees and managing the issue appropriately, I don't think we should get involved and create a problem that isn't existing today.
Councillor Grant.
Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering in line with that, if we're looking at it from the perspective of we're planting more trees, that maybe this is more suitable for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six work plan as just this discussion to come up and a reassessment as we come towards the end of our council terms as something to, to look at.
I just add that I think that it's an opportunity for us to, you know, in the continuing of the planting of trees to recognize that we are increasing our canopy coverage and maybe it would be of us to continue to protect that canopy as we continue to increase it. So I think that there's something of value here in, in exploring, uh, the tree canopy of Woolwich. I know that in some of our commitments, uh, as well, um, you know, really looking at the canopy coverage is one of those features. Um, you know, that we continue to, uh, be recommended that we, we look at. So I can see some value. I do recognize some of the concerns that have been noted. Mayor Sean's?
Yeah, a question for Ms. Freeze. Um. At least I think it's from Ms. Freeze. How are, do we take steps now to protect trees? I know, so I've been living in the house for forty years and when we built, there was a tree saving plan that was part of the subdivision that we weren't allowed to, to cut down trees, uh, except for, you know, the footprint of the house. So like, are there actions that we're taking that is already protecting the tree canopy without going to the, uh, to the work of, of staff creating an actual bylaw?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, Chair to, uh, Mayor Sean. So yes, through any development applications, we can impose a tree cutting, uh, by, or a tree uh, planting plan, a tree saving plan, uh, through any development application. A tree cutting bylaw would not apply to any planning applications. It would only apply to, uh, private properties and removal of trees. Uh, that would be one of the exemptions would be is if they're going through a development process, they would be exempt from a tree cutting bylaw. And that's pretty typical in most municipal tree cutting bylaws.
Alright, so with, uh, we do have, uh, a resolution, um, so council direct township staff to explore, uh, the development of a tree bylaw to protect the township's creek tree canopy, that the item be added to the twenty twenty-four work plan for staff to report back on with a recommendation to council on implementation. Um, so is there a mover on that one? Seeing none?
Have a amendment maybe to that, which would be the twenty-five, twenty-six work plan as opposed to the twenty twenty-four.
Uh, we have a second round that? Seeing none.
Chair. I could, um, suggest i- if it's something that, that we want to reconsider, that perhaps we reconsider this. I don't know, in a year. And, and see where council sits or two years. I think councillor Grant maybe suggested even in, in two years that, that it be, uh, put on the outstanding list and brought back for reconsideration then.
Reasonable with council? Uh, okay, so that is second, so we shall call. No? Direction, okay. You got that direction. Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Um, so with that, that moves us on then to council reports or updates. Are there any updates, councillor Grant?
Uh, thank you. So I've had a number of questions regarding the trees for Woolwich and the trees for life planting. Um, I think councillor Brian was also looking to bring something this up. Um, so I just had, wanted to maybe open the floor up for some discussion as I had a number of questions from residents recently this past week. Um, I'm not sure who would be best to direct it to though.
After you, uh, Chair Kado, uh, to councillor Grant, you can certainly address them to, uh, ourselves, uh, infrastructure services is uh, looking after the trees for Woolwich program from the township's perspective. Um, I apologize, the direct question though was.
I had a list, so I didn't want to like rattle them off before I had actually found a person to rattle them off too.
See, this sounds like a game show. Let's see what I can do here.
I guess, uh, maybe to start, um, can we maybe receive like an update of where we're at with, I believe planting is taking place in Ward Three right now? If we can have a general idea of where that process is at and maybe the communication that was provided to residents ahead of time. Um, there were some concerns about the process and execution of this from the perspective of the resident.
Okay, yeah, and through, uh, through Chair Kado to councillor Grant and the rest of council, um, we did have a communication process. Uh, we did learn from our first phase uh, in Ward Two, um, and I think we followed along with that. So there was no overarching community engagement. There was direction from council to staff uh, to work in conjunction with, and there was a number of lessons learned. I can share that. Um, we did change how the communication was to be done. It was led by the township. Uh, there was a series of communiques that were provided, identifying what was going to happen, when it was going to happen. Um, unfortunately, it's some, sometimes, you know, it, it, uh, it does get lost, uh, by some. We appreciate that. There was also opportunity to meet with staff, uh, for people who wanted to raise specific concerns. So we feel we did a good job of communicating that to residents and provided enough opportunity, we think, to meet with staff and members of Tweak, but that was certainly, um, we, we, you know, one of the lessons learned was Tweak is excellent, very good at planting trees and doing what they do. And we felt that we were good at the communication side. So if there were any concerns, uh, I'm not aware that, uh, we had received, uh, very many. We would appreciate if council could funnel them to us so we could get to the bottom of that and follow up with that. Um, but we think there was a number of communiques. It wasn't one communication. We can assure council of that. There was a number of communications that happened over a series of times and was purposely done in that manner so that we knew that there would be reminders needing to happen. We informed what those stakes were representing. We talked about property, uh, line boundaries and where those were to be. Um, so again, we are more than willing to meet and engage with any, uh, any member of the public who wants to discuss that further.
Councillor Brian?
Thank you. Through you to Jared. Um, one question that I was asked, was there any consultation done with the farmers prior to you telling them it was going to be done? Because I've heard that they had no, uh, opportunity to discuss this beforehand.
Uh, through Chair Kado to, uh, councillor Bryant. Again, with the series of communiques, there was lots of opportunity to engage. There was contact information provided to reach out to us. Uh, there was no neighborhood, uh, consultation process. Uh, council did direct staff to engage with Tweak to do a tree planting program on public space. So again, there sometimes is a misunderstanding about where the public road allowance is in relation to where the private property is. Sometimes that's a challenge. We know we have come across encroachments where uh, farming or other things have encroached into, uh, the public road allowance. So sometimes uh, that's a challenge and we have, uh, done a number of pauses in areas where there were challenges in that regard, so that we are looking to do a follow-up planting in the spring. So there was opportunity and again, we would encourage anybody who has those concerns to reach out, direct to staff. Um, and then we can meet with them, uh, go over those individual concerns. And if we come across something we feel, uh, needs to be addressed, we can certainly pause and include that, uh, or, or a different approach come spring. So we do have that ability as well. Um, we certainly did not, uh, want this to be a ram down the throat of any private property owner and we think we did a uh, a much better job of that in the second round. So again, if we, we would appreciate those because we, I don't, I have not been alerted to any of these issues. So it would be appreciated if they came through staff so we could at least try to address them. And of course, everybody has that opportunity to go to their council member whenever, if, if we can't address that issue, but I'm sure we can resolve those issues.
Councillor Grant.
Um, the other question, uh, through you to, uh, to Mr. Poupay. I was just wondering between the, the time period, just for maybe context, for when the letter and the communications were sent or the last one to the staking of the, the trees, do we roughly know how long was that? Was it uh, a month in between the communications and staking or was it a matter of weeks or?
Yeah, through, uh, through you, um, uh, Chair Kado to councillor Grant. There were three, uh, three, four, four written communications, uh, all approximately about a month apart. So we have June, July, August and September. Um, that is a significant number of communications in our opinion, certainly. Um, so there was lots of opportunity. Um, it potentially something got lost, potentially somebody didn't see it maybe, um, that's a possibility, but there were four communications approximately a month apart on each one.
Um, and then a follow-up question I have is about the maintenance of the trees themselves. I believe the town or the township will take over responsibility after a certain amount of years.
Correct.
Could you give us a timeframe for one that would be occurring?
Yeah, so through you, uh, Chair Kado to councillor Grant, I, uh, I don't know, I don't recall the exact, it was years. Um, I know Twees for, uh, Trees for Woolwich was looking after the watering. Uh, but I, I'm not sure if it was three years, uh, that we would then turn or seven years.
Sticks in my head as well, yeah.
So, but we can get that, that answer back, but it was a number of years. Um, and that's something obviously that needs to be discussed in the budget, but that was part of the discussion as well. Uh, the council direction that the, we are looking at these as assets, um, that we do need to manage. Um, this isn't just a one and done. This is something that we have to invest in and I think that was, uh, uh, understood by both council and staff at the time, uh, that we're working, uh, with Tweak on that and, and these are to be, uh, here forever, um, as long as the, the, the life of the tree. As long as the 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 life of the tree.
The, uh, the follow-up question I have to that is if in that three-year term. Um, and this may be a question you're not able to answer, but something to take back to Trees for Woolwich is. The capacity of Trees for Woolwich to maintain that level of care for the amount of trees that they planted, and like what their volunteer base is and their their ability to kind of, um. Commit to that three-year term as they do a large-scale planting.
Yeah, I think we have some insight into that, in that that was a partnership with Earthscape, uh, Mark Short and Trees for Woolwich, so. That was a commitment that that was done, um, that was made, that's been cleared us in a number of meetings, and we have had. Uh, regular meetings with Trees for Woolwich as well, uh, which has been wonderful, actually, and. Um, a good news story is they have applied the Woolwich approach. On regional lands and, uh, other townships and municipalities are now reaching out, so. We were able to, you know, we had a bit of a rough start at the beginning, I think, but but I think everybody would say it's been, uh, it's been quite smooth, but. Um, as far as that term goes, that was the communication back to township of Woolwich, was that 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 is a, um, a, um. A completely reasonable timeframe with the partnership that they have, uh, and the commitments from, uh, their community members as well as the funding partners.
This is my last one, I promise. Um, the, uh, yeah, after that, Eric can, uh, can take over. Um, I just wanted to confirm, uh, the resident that I spoke to is on Cox Creek Street, and she had trees planted under the hydro lines, and I. I believe when Trees for Woolwich was here, they spoke about shorter trees, I just wanted to confirm that that's what those were planted on that road.
Yeah, again, that is correct, there are specific species that are permitted to be planted under hydro lines. Um, certainly, we can confirm that that was indeed the case, but that is, uh, that is something that is is absolutely correct.
Thank you for that, are there any other council updates? Being none, uh. Uh, outstanding activity list, is there any discussion on the outstanding activity list? There are no notices of motion, and that brings us to the end of our meeting, is there anyone willing to move in second and adjournment? Counselor Bryant? Counselor Grant, all those in favor? And that is passed, so in closing, council would like to thank all those who participated, attended, or tuned in to the committee of the whole meeting, and we wish you all a good night, thank you.